Call this meeting of the planning board to order. If you would please rise for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes, April 4th, 2024. Do we have any comments or revisions? Not could I have a motion then to approve the minutes of April 4th as prepared? We'll move. Phil, second by? Diana, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? The next minutes would be from May 16th, 2024. We do not have those before us. So we'll move on to the June 20th, 2024 minutes. Comments, revisions? I have one. Bottom of the first page. Vote by proper motion made by Mrs. Lipinski. It should say June 6th, not May 2nd. Other revisions, comments? Not could I have a motion then to approve the minutes of June 20th, 2024 as revised? Eric, second by Seamus, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
I have to abstain.
One abstention. Next item on the agenda is a possible extension or abandonment of applications pursuant to town code. First one being Silhouette Farm. We have a letter from Hometown Engineering, addressed to the planning board. Dear Planning Board members, please let this letter serve as a request for a 180-day extension of conditional approval. Initial approval was originally received by your board, from your board on January 6th, 2022. The status of the project has not changed since the previous extension request. You may recall that the original intent of the subdivision was to create a single building lot off Dunmore Lane so that the owner's daughter could construct a single-family home for her and her fiance, now husband. Due to timing and circumstances, some being financial, the owner's daughter and her husband purchased a starter home in the area where they still live today. It's still the intention of the owner's daughter and her husband to build on this property, but with the current economic climate and state of interest rates building isn't possible at this time. Given these circumstances, the owners wish to extend and maintain their conditional approval and request another 180-day extension. We appreciate your attention to this matter. If there's anything else required at this time, please do not hesitate to contact my office. Anthony, Anthony Trucciano, engineer. Sean.
I've got an edge, chairman.
Comments from the board? Kelly, 180 days takes us to when?
January 16th, 2025.
Could I have a motion then to extend the request for the 180-day extension to January 16th, 2025 for the conditional approval of Silhouette Farm subdivision?
I'll place a motion.
Diana, second by?
I'll second.
Marty, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Next one would be Marte Holding Group LLC. Again, a request from Bradley Cleverly, engineer for MJS Engineering, dated July 9th. Dear Planning Board, please accept this letter as a formal request for an extension of the conditional approval for the above-referenced project. We have coordinated some mittles with Sean Hoffman, P.E. In addition, we are assembling the required additional documents which will be transmitted to the planning board. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact the undersigned. Very truly yours, Brad Cleverly. Sean.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you approved this initially back in January, and I think I've had three sets of back and forth with the Afghans regarding your conditions. They still have outstanding as of this week stormwater issues as well as water and payment of bonds.
Bonds. Comments from the board? Kelly.
January 16th, 2025.
Could I have a motion then to approve the extension to January 16th, 2025 for Marte Holdings Group conditional approval? Seamus, second by?
I'll second.
Phil, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? And lastly, we have a request again from MJS Engineering, Brad Cleverly, for Planning Board Gertig Gardens, LTD, Maple Avenue. Please accept this letter as a formal request for an extension of conditional site plan approval for the above-referenced project. We've coordinated some mittles with Sean Hoffman, P.E. In addition, we are assembling the required additional documents which will be transmitted to the planning board. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact the undersigned. Very truly yours, Brad Cleverly. Again, Sean.
That letter sounds very familiar to the other letter.
It does, I could have just said ditto.
So, yeah, we've had a couple rounds of revisions, but they are still outstanding as of March. I haven't heard from them.
Since March?
Yeah, I believe so, yeah.
Comments from the board? Kelly.
January 16th, 2025. You never get all the same date for all of them. It's pretty exciting when I get those.
Could I have a motion then to approve the request for conditional site plan approval extension to January 16th, 2025 for Gertig Gardens, LTD?
I'll make the motion.
Marty, second by?
I'll second.
Eric, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? They will be notified? No public hearings, we'll move on to 144 Old Chester Road, We have an application for a site plan for a residential pool and deck on 2.3 plus or minus acres on Old Chester Road in RU District of AQ6 and Cedarburg Overlays. We're here this evening to consider a draft resolution of approval. You're here. I thought I saw you in the back there. Kelly.
So I prepared for you a draft resolution of conditional approval for minor site plan. On the second page in Goldike Alex was the Orange County Planning Department report. We did receive that back. It was a local determination dated June 24th. And there are only two specific conditions. First, signing of the plans. The Afghans shall comply with the June 14th, 2024 memorandum of the town engineer to the satisfaction of the town engineer. And number two, all excavations spoiled shall be removed from the property unless otherwise caused by an inside building inspector.
On the procedural history.
Yes.
Second paragraph. This is the planning board waive the public hearing. Again, waive the requirement for public hearing. Other comments or revisions that need to be made?
Looks good.
Looks good. In that case, could I have a motion then to approve the resolution of conditional approval minor site plan for Javier Mercedes as modified this evening? Diana, second by?
I'll second it.
Seamus, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Congratulations. Next item on the agenda then would be 17M. 17M Flex Building, 12-2-43. Application for a site plan and special permit approval for warehouse office on 8.9 plus or minus acres along New York State Route 17M and Cannon Hill Drive. In the I-zone, the AQ3 floodplain and ponding, two corridor water supply and watershed overlays. We're here this evening to look at some revised plans and possibly schedule a public hearing. Welcome.
Good evening. I guess, as we said at the last meeting, we received our bearings.
I know, you have to introduce yourself first.
Was that, I'm sorry.
Introduce yourself in person.
Jill Fow, Mr. Peter Zackelfell, representing the applicant. We submitted a full plan set, responded to comments from Mr. Hoffman that we received on a preliminary basis. This submission included turn analysis that was requested. We have a full plan set. We just completed our SWIP, which we will be submitting tomorrow. But the stormwater design that you see is what was there. So it's really just a text in the hydro pad that will be, that we've completed. So that is in the works. I will say that we've also had Esposito, we do have a landscaping plan in the first place, but Esposito will be actually preparing a separate plan that will be included in this plan set. We wanted to get something in here, so we had a complete set for the board to consider. Otherwise, nothing really changed layout-wise. We did take the advice, you know, we went with the single entrance, obviously. We did pull the berm back slightly for the site distance. We've also been in contact with the CMA regarding the DOT for the consideration of the turn lay down on 17M. So we're working in that respect right now.
David, the side wall?
The side wall, what we've done, we proposed on our plan, we have an asphalt walk as an out path. So that's what we have. And that's pretty much it.
Sean, is this the appropriate time to make comments on the plans?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman.
You want to start?
Sure. I just, I did not distribute written comments because I wanted to find out the status of DOT and if you're scheduling a public hearing, there'd be no new submissions. So if you're going to get them repetitively. I did just want to ask you one question, Joe.
Yes.
You had mentioned the pond hadn't changed. Comparing the two last submissions, or current submission with the last submission, it looks like the pond didn't change. Just wanted to make sure you're aware.
Oh, I'm sorry. The pond didn't change from this submission to what we'll be submitting when we submit the SWIP. That's, I'm sorry.
That's all I have. Time, Chairman, if there's more questions for me?
Might have just details on the maps, if you're sorry to mark them up.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. On page two, make-up collision is no longer make-up, it's calendar. Remember? On page 10. About four-inch diameter inlet pipe to the pump chamber from the septic tank. We're showing a three-inch discharge pipe to the valve chamber. It don't match diameter on it. We have a note for, requiring an engineer certification for residential lots. It's not a residential lot.
All set on the same page?
It's all on the same page. Note number four on the sanitary duplex, well, well, well.
Yes.
Says emergency power will be provided by, you know, Kohler unit for Henry Jones subdivision. It's a carryover.
Gotcha.
Yeah, it's a carryover. And then note number 11 refers to the Mudna Sewer Basin. That would not apply as well. And as far as the entry sign, as far as details for the entry sign, did we have that? I saw a sign that says no trucks beyond this point.
Yeah, that's.
But is there a sign that's introducing the project name with the location?
Not at this time. So, do we have plans to put a name, a sign, like an entrance?
With a building?
Yeah, you know.
Well, right, right near the entrance, it looked like on one of the sheets, there was a mark that said.
Top of the line, not the other one.
No, that sign was for.
Which way to go?
Yeah, that was, that was a no truck sign.
Yeah.
Okay.
So they wouldn't go around the front of the building. And if we have plans for an entrance sign, we'll show it on the, on the, on the next set of plans. But do you have one on the other building?
Yes.
Is it on the building or is it on the?
It's on the, by the entrance.
Okay, yes. We'll provide that.
That's all I have. Other comments from the board?
Refresh my recollection, did we address herbicides, pesticides, salts? Use and non-use of that?
We did not discuss that at the meeting.
In the narrative.
Now, we, we discussed about the outdoor storage, but nothing about, nothing that I, I recollect about pesticides or herbicides.
Do you know what the intention is?
So you use herbicide or pesticide, sign of your landscaping goal? We can put a restriction on that if that.
And how about salts? Snow.
Salt or ice.
The icing.
Of course, we can use it. What's the issue? What is the issue? What do you have?
The issue is you're near wetlands.
Well, everything will, everything that's in the parking lot will go into the stormwater facilities. And those are designed to, you know, for water quality as well.
They don't affect salt.
What's that?
They don't treat salt. Salt, it's all delicious to burn. You might dilute it, but you're not going to, there's no uptake of salt.
No.
No, it's a kind of, yeah.
Is the alternative gravel?
Sand?
You mean in terms of? Yeah. That you could use sand or something like that? Or maybe you could use, maybe there's another product or something like that. I don't recall if there was restriction on the other building at the end of Cannon Hill. Perhaps, you know, regardless, there was.
I, I don't recall any restriction on many of the projects at the time of the salts.
We missed it then.
I can tell you for pesticides and herbicides, it was indicated in their EAF that they don't.
Yeah, we'll locate that on the plan.
Let us know what your intention is regarding that.
Okay, we just gotta discuss that. Thank you.
I don't have anything regarding salt.
Other comments? Phil? Did you have any else? You made this end?
If I could just get a little clarification. So it's a bike path out front?
Yes.
And it's asphalt?
Yes.
And the width is five feet?
Yes.
Right, that's, that's all I have.
Yeah, just, I think I understand the site plan at the last meeting. So ultimately, compared in relation to 17M, the one end of the building is going to be below 17M a little bit, the elevation? And the other end is going to be above it?
Yeah, we suck it as much as we could, yeah. I mean, because, yeah, it's on the slope, so.
Right, yeah, so it's, so it's going to be lower at the one end, above it at the other end, correct.
And we have, that's why we have the berm wrapping around.
The other concern expressed at the ERB is, and it has nothing to do with anything you've submitted, except the concern is about the berm. Because trucks coming out of this road onto 17M really, if they're going to make a right-hand turn, they have to stop back further because they're going to have to be in a left-hand lane to be able to make the right-hand turn to there. They just can't make, a tractor trailer can't make right-hand turn from the right-hand lane where they're supposed to be.
It's from what?
Under 17M, right. So to some degree, that berm maybe has to be looked at in terms of visibility. Request had to stop 40, 50 feet back from the, we have a C.
The DOT has asked for some initial information, and part of that was truck movements in and out of Cannon Hill. So we'll keep it on the date with that as well. And they're aware of the berm as well as work on the line.
Any other comments? Kelly.
So this would next be for scheduling a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, if we consider a public hearing, the Afghans indicated that they are at the DOT and perhaps some of the DOT comments may affect the berm and which term could affect visibility and whatnot. I don't know if you want to wait till you pass something in the DOT for you to schedule a public hearing? Or, you know, because the next step after a public hearing is resolution. And you have a certain amount of time if you're required to take action on the plan.
If there was an issue with the berm, whether it be the elevation or the location or tapered down as you got towards the intersection, would that impact anything that we would be doing on this board?
Well, you had indicated to the Afghans the last time they were here that you liked the one entrance because they'd allow them to extend the berm down here. They need, they just can't chop a piece of the berm now.
No, but meaning it might, it might, it could be something gradually from the higher point at 17M works its way down to a lower elevation as you get to where the T is at the access. Perhaps, you know, doesn't necessarily have to all be the same finished elevation, correct?
No, there's no requirement for that at all. But I thought the board liked that because it reduces the visibility of the building. So if there's a chance that, if, if that may be affected or eliminated by the DOT, I don't know if you want to schedule a public hearing. You certainly can schedule a public hearing and get public comment at this time. But then just keep in mind.
Or is it stayed open if we had to?
Yeah. And we'd waive any, any.
Time issue.
Time issue.
Do you have any idea when they're going to get back to?
That's why, that's not in my control, that's why.
Here it is, we're shocked. So the two dates are August 1st or August 15th?
What do we look like showing as far as the agenda, it's on those states?
Right now, you have one initial appearance, I'm sorry, two initial appearance applications due on this first meeting. Applications you may have received or regularly received shortly. Very minor.
Okay. Any reason why we couldn't set the public hearing for August 1st? Board members?
Have a good one.
Have a good one, okay. Well, that's the case, kind of a motion then to sit. Sit the public hearing for August 1st, 2024, for 17M Flex Building.
I'll make the motion.
And we have Marty, second by?
Second.
Seamus, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Thank you very much.
Take care and hopefully you'll hear soon, best from yesterday's team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Take care.
Next item on the agenda is Antaragua Mansion, 2-1-21.2, 21.3, 21.4, and 21.5. We have an application for a site plan for a special permit approval for a catering facility with accessory guest rooms and a spa on 145.7 plus or minus acres along New York State Route 207 in the RU Zone of the AQ3 overlay. We're here this evening for an initial presentation. I don't know if you would want to move forward so it'll be easier for you to see the map.
I'll come up and get it, thanks.
Okay.
Thank you. Turn it a little bit as well, too. There we go.
Zach Sallow, Engineering Surveying Properties. Here for the Antaragua mansion. I'm sure this has been in front of the board a couple of times in the past. I know from Sean's letter, there had been an application back in 2020, 2022 with a ZBA application back in 2021. So what we plan to do with this project is to, one, expand on the building, but not affect the facade of the building, not affect the character of the building, and expand on it to include a seasonal event space we could do a tent with ceremony area for weddings and other events. The nature of the project and what we're proposing is pretty similar to what's existing there. We're just expanding on it. So the entrance drives will pretty much follow what is existing and then widen. And on top of that, we've expanded the parking for this type of use. We need to, with this use, need to go to the ZBA for, I believe it was 5,000 square feet or more for commercially use in this zone, RU Zone. We've developed grading plans, utility plans, erosion center control plans, landscaping, lighting, details, well, testing protocol, architecturals, and full form EAF at this point. Respectfully request the planning board to declare their intent to be lead agency, circulate for GML, and refer us to the ZBA.
Thank you. Sean.
So, Mr. Chairman, I did distribute the, I have to acknowledge receipt of the comments. I had a lot of comments, as the boards were, I'm just going to hit the high points if there's any questions. Please go through it, Eric up. So there's an application for a site plan and special permit. During the staff meeting, we discussed the use with Frank, and this is a catering facility. Catering facility under your code is a defined, I'm sorry, service business is a defined term. And one of the items they had under service business is catering. The Afghan also is proposing 14 guest rooms and a spa. As it's been presented, those are accessory, meaning that it's not a lodging facility where you can get, rent a room for a night. It would have to be somebody that's part of the. part of the wedding party utilizing those two facilities. So as you go through and analyze this application, please keep that in mind, that that's how that facility is intended to function.
How does that work with the spa? I mean, the usual plan originally was where people can come up, stay for the day, stay for the weekend, the spa, stay over, and then take advantage of whatever programs they had.
That's not what this happened.
This spa, in the spa itself is only being used for?
For wedding guests.
Wedding guests.
The way it was explained in the staff meeting, and I, if I was the board, I would recommend that you, uh, have any questions on the UCHS applicant to give you a narrative. But the way it was explained was that if there would be a wedding on, let's say, Saturday, maybe the wedding party wants to come up Friday night, they stay at the facility, maybe they wanna use the spa the morning of the wedding or something like that.
But not to the public? Come off the street?
I can speak to that a little bit.
Please.
And the, the applicant Franco Fadanza has several, uh, facilities in Orange County, one of them being barn in the town of Walch Hill. When that plan was developed, there was a existing farmhouse that was turned into the same type of use, where it was used for the wedding party and when the wedding is over the next day they're, so that's, that's how we intend to use these rooms. There's fourteen rooms on the second floor and a, uh, ADA accessible room on the first floor.
So essentially in between venues, it would be there?
Correct. Can you just confirm the number? I think there's fourteen total. They counted the first floor and one, and it's fourteen on total.
Uh, they recounted, they started at one on the second floor.
Okay.
But they have fifteen, they have fifteen rooms.
Neil?
Yeah, I, I, I think that in our code, under lodging, it doesn't say it's necessarily accessory. I think that, I don't see how that is to accessory, therefore makes it exempt, then you can have a lodging facility. Uh, I don't, I just don't see that in the code at all. I can get it to you and read. Lodging facility, any hotel, motel, inn, or other establishment providing sleeping accommodations or chi, for transient guests with or without a dining room or restaurant, excluding, and breakfast. I think it's, I think it's in a, it is a lodging facility, and it's just because it's accessory to, the hotel at Legoland is accessory to the resort, but I wouldn't not call that a hotel.
That, that's a totally different use and a totally different concept.
But, but it's not entirely. It's, we have.
It is, this is in the RU and that's in the.
Yes, yes, it is. It's a different zoning, okay? Admittedly up there, it's a different zoning. What I'm saying is I don't think that accessory takes a use and says that that use doesn't count now because it's accessory.
It's not that it doesn't count. It can only be used if it's subject to, and to the principal use.
Is it customarily incidental and subordinate to the use of the building?
However, lodging is not necessarily customary.
Frank can correct me if I'm wrong, but Frank has determined that this would be accessory to the use proposed for this application. But I'm not going to.
If we get that in writing for Frank, I'll have to deal with it, Frank. I, I agree that.
So the, the use is in the.
Frank can tell me I'm wrong.
Building inspector, four months.
Okay.
They can get something written.
Yeah.
Lot murder, there's several lots, I think you intend to merge those. To me, your code, uh, A three sixty, there's no requirement for you to put a lot murder. Yeah, they can go ahead and do that. They don't need to even be here for that. So that's not part of this application. Uh, the applicant mentioned the five thousand square feet. Uh, just to remind you, I know you're familiar with this, uh, by way of the all one one all application, the commercial use in the RU zone, there's certain requirements. One is you can't really change the exterior appearance of the building. The other is that, um, the business can be no more than five thousand square feet. This is part, in excess of five thousand square feet has their need for an area development.
Sure, going with that line of thought, you said not changing the exterior, uh, appearance. Putting up the tent on which is pretty sizable on the side of the, uh, structure, seasonally. Is that changing the appearance or is it because it's temporary?
If you, uh, had a chance to look at, uh, my report, the code, I copied the code language in the face, it's new structures, right? So it would be a termination of Frank to make whether that's considered a new structure and then needs to meet the residential appearance requirement.
Has, has that been done yet, Frank?
No, that's not the.
I don't think the applicant provided any, any architecturals or anything like that on the fence, or I'm sorry, that's on the tent.
On the tent, we could provide some, certainly.
But is it a temporary structure? Is it, or is it gonna be something like West Hills? You know, West Hills has a tent, but it's like a permanent tent.
Frings these up and the pants comes down.
Seasonally, you know, when the snow comes and in winter, the, um, and the wedding venue starts to die down, that's when typically it would come down. So it's, it's not intended to be all year round. It would come down during the winter time.
Neil?
Two things. One, one, temporary or whatever for building code is a hundred eighty days. So if stuff for a hundred, more than a hundred eighty days, it's considered permanent as far as the building code. Different regulations.
Consecutive or, uh?
I don't, I, I figured, I don't, haven't looked at it lately.
Okay.
I, I would admit to that. Uh, and what was the other question? Uh, I'll come back to it. I know I had something else.
Sure.
So special permit component of this, uh, the applicant provided you with a narrative that addresses the environmental performance criteria. I also pointed out to them that that provision, again, you dealt with this in all one one all, that they have demonstrated they have no greater overall off-site impact, they have permitted use, um, so they're gonna have to provide that. Parking, um, this is something I think you may wanna consider this evening. Your code allows, does not allow parking, um, uh, in front of a structure. Parking is proposed in front of the structure. However, your code has the exception that if it's screened from adjoining properties, entering the road, it can be located anywhere on the site.
Pretty good setback.
It is, yeah. And that's why I think, and what I think that you need to discuss tonight is the applicant provided you with some photographs, and you don't need to make a decision tonight, but you may want some additional photographs. You may want to do a site visit, uh, and schedule a site visit to see how visible that parking lot might be. And if you're considering a site visit, you may want the applicant to actually feel and identify where that parking lot, that it's gonna be.
Yeah, 'cause that's gonna be beyond the tent that's not there right now, as far as where it sits on the, uh, portion.
Yes, it, it will. And, and in fact, the existing mansion front face, I think, is the closest portion of the building to the road, and it does go in front of that front face, so I can. So unless it's not visible from the road and the surrounding properties, the applicant would not be able to do that without errors. Access, um, in my experience, uh, New York State's gonna make that upgrade to a commercial driveway. I don't know if they have a chance to speak to New York State yet. We've asked them to provide site distances. The other item that we're, that we're concerned about is, um, stacking distance on two oh seven, making the left turn if you're traveling north and have to enter the site. Where you have southbound moving traffic, people are gonna have to wait, queue up, and I don't know what the site distances are along, stopping site distance is a long road. We asked the applicant for information on whether every apparatus is required, that's required for any structure over thirty feet, uh, and to confirm that they can get a fire truck within a hundred and fifty feet of all exterior spaces of the building. Water, the applicant's indicated it's gonna be a non-transient, non-community water supply regulated by the DOH. Uh, we've indicated that they should try to coordinate testing so they can take care of your testing requirements and the DOH's testing requirements at the same time. I thought the plans were unclear. There's three wells. Are you just gonna use well two? Or are you gonna keep all the two wells?
I believe the intention was to use well two, yes.
The plans didn't have anything in terms of pipelines or anything like that, so, you know.
Sure, go back to the, uh, well testing, coordinating with the county. The county typically requires testing it, you know, it's one well for sure, two times the average. Our code is two times the max.
Or where testing protocol is. For a commercial building, it's a case by case.
So, I'm sorry?
It's a different standard for a commercial building. For a commercial building, it's a case by case, but I generally try to recommend that they be consistent with that. So it would be the average day usually multiplied by one point six to get the end of the day and then times two.
Is that how you do it?
Usually, yeah.
Okay.
Why is that? How do you guys do it?
Well, it was different. Now, the county itself just does two times the average. After you've taken account the reductions for, do you see the twenty percent reductions for anything but the red beds? Then after that, you double it, and that would be the max day. And then typically a peak would be anywhere between four and ten times, depending on the type of, uh, service.
Yeah, and I, I think the reason for that is the county of Montesake is interested in ensuring this applicant has enough water for their use. The town's concerned about how this water, uh, withdrawal's gonna affect surrounding properties. So I think the town's looking to overstress the well to see if there's impact on the neighbors.
The notion of, oh, the town code, not the county code.
For the amount of pumping, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Last thing I had was on stormwater, uh, twelve and a half acres of the servants were being in a swift.
Of course.
And I had asked whether you are anticipating a waiver of the five acre threshold.
For this, uh, project, most likely not. Uh, we'll probably develop any cases. Um, I believe the parking area itself is under the five acres, so we'll probably work there in that way, and then, um, this will probably be as one as two.
Those are the highlights, most of the different questions.
From the board.
You, you indicate, uh, the EAF, that the hours of operation, you indicate the hours of operation for guest quarters. How about the facility itself, the events gallery and the catering hall? I think that should be in your narrative, hours of operation.
Hours of, in narrative to the planning board?
Yes.
Or in the EAF? Because I believe the, the, the hours of the, um, the facility for the lodging is gonna be a lot bigger than the, uh, actual catering hall. So if you, if you just want a narrative explaining what we expect for each event, and I can provide that, but I, I don't know if we need to update the EAF for that.
Kelly, any further?
I think that they should provide you with a narrative, uh, similar to what Sean was just talking about too, about the accessory, potentially accessory uses of the spot and the lodging, the hours of operation of folks that you can fully analyze the impact of that.
We certainly would wanna know what's going on under the tent, as far as music or noise.
Application, yes. Yeah, that should all be part of the narrative that you receive for environmental performance standards.
I'll also say, uh.
When the tent is going up, coming down, I anticipate that.
In, in regards to noise, uh, we do intend, um, to screen this area, um, from, especially from the parking lot. The applicant might want the patrons to be able to see the parking lot. Uh, they kinda wanna enclose it, so, uh, we'll certainly analyze noise, especially music being played from that location.
You're indicating water and sanitary waste, six thousand one hundred and five gallons per day. If you can provide in your narrative how you got there, what was the basis for the calculation?
They do have that, though.
They do?
Yeah.
Okay. And so the impervious surface is gonna be just shy of an acre?
Uh, new impervious, I believe, yeah.
New impervious. So what, uh, more or less, what would the total be?
Uh, off the top of my head, I can't give you that number, but I can certainly provide that.
Okay. That's, for now.
I'm good.
Thanks, Phil. Sure.
Yeah, I, I don't have much. I just would love some more, um, detail about your expectations. You have twenty-five employees in the well testing protocol, which I assume is sort of your general estimate. Um, there are probably, and, and you articulate how many seats you have. There are probably people who are neither site employees nor guests of the event. Um, that may be vendors or something like that that are working on the, the, the event that's, that's happening. So just enter, I, I, you'll likely have more water than you need and more parking than you need, than you need, but if you could make sure to include it's sort of accessory people, um, to this, I think that that would be helpful. Okay. And, and the only other thing, we, we keep talking about it as a wedding facility, if there are other corporate uses, if there are other uses that are anticipated, um, I just wanna, you know, know that. Okay.
The only question I have is what kind of truck traffic you guys need, um, having through that, you know, food or whatever. Is it large-scale trucks? Is it smaller trucks?
From what I've seen, um, at other facilities, it's usually box trucks. We do provide, uh, and we, we didn't include it in our submission, but the, the radii and and turning, uh, templates for, um, uh, fire trucks. So I, I don't expect like large semi-trailers coming onto the site. Um, just mostly box trucks, similar to what is done at the barn.
You mentioned fire trucks. Do they, when they do this study with the fire trucks, do they incorporate any kind of cars parked on the side of the, of the driveway? Of course, you know, during a venue like that, there's probably cars parked on the side and people come. Do they, if fire hits, a truck comes around, would they be able to still make the turn or issue with cars parked on the side?
Well, it is taken into account, and there's minimum drive aisle lifts for, um, fire trucks. So, um, we made sure to include, uh, minimum lifts for, for that use.
Question for you. Uh, on the page, you have a lot of details for the water system. We're, we're talking wells. You've got details for hydrants and all kinds of stuff. Are we looking at putting in a fire protection system with stainless pipe and fire pumps and everything like that for fi, uh, fire protection? Whether water main or are we just creating a hydromantic system into the building? What, what's the, uh, plan?
I'll, I have to get back to you on that. Um, we talked about potentially providing fire protection, um, you know, with hydrants, but I'll have to get back to you on that.
So I'm just, I'm, I'm looking at the schematics, the, the drawing, and I'm looking at the site plan. Is the footprint of the building itself expanding or is the footprint staying the same?
So there, there are some expansions, uh, but like you said, we do, don't intend to impact some building and, and the, the nature of it. Um, but there are, and it was included in the architectural drawings that were provided, um, there are additional porches and, and a section here that includes a pre-event space and.
If there could just be, um, a sheet on the site plan of existing conditions?
Yep.
Certainly, this way we can, we can see the difference between existing and proposed. Because, yeah, it says proposed building expansion, just a big block of the whole right section, but that pretty much exists already. They're just adding a portion of that.
Oh, yeah, I had the same problem. I actually took the architecturals and put it on the site plan, on, on my plan, I think. Please correct me if I'm wrong. Where that jog is on the left side, where it starts to get shaded, no, by, between the bathroom and the ADA, I'm sorry, between the ADA bathroom and the suite there? Can you, I don't get it?
Here?
Yeah, yeah, right there. Like, that's the general termination of the existing buildings. Everything to the left of there, um, it is new.
Marty, I had the same problem. I actually had Sean show it to me because I, I thought that the building was, yeah.
Yeah, I own you didn't know that until you told me.
I didn't want him to feel bad.
Yeah, so if we could just, so the, the architect was in the process of, um, actually scanning the building to get the actual dimensions of the building. I mean, we had our survey information with the building corners. Um, it was just, it, it looked a little bit better to just show it as the whole building itself. So in the future, I'll provide, uh, existing emissions plan and potentially something inside to show where the expansions are.
Good, agreed, thanks. That's all I have.
Here's.
I was interested in wondering about the, uh, gate, the pillars and the gate at the bottom of the road. I'm not really a large entranceway, and Sean said the DOT is gonna be looking at that, and you're gonna have to maybe take out those pillars and the gate?
Yeah.
Planning on securing a place when it's not being utilized?
At this time, I do not have an answer for that. I know the, the roadway is gonna be widened, so those gates, um, may not be usable.
Yeah.
Both good emergency vehicles, as Eric said, to turn in there, they're gonna have to have a big wider turn.
Yeah.
So I'll, uh, I'll look into that. I'll ask the applicant what his intentions are.
Seamus, I can just piggyback on that thought for a second. The, um, it's also not just the width, but also the setback from the, the road, right? You want, if, if there's gonna be closing, you want the ability for somebody in an emergency vehicle to get in there, do what they need to do in the gate and then go on. You don't want the backend sitting down in traffic.
And if they do put a gate, you said they probably need to put a knock spot.
I would definitely recommend it, yeah.
Mine was the same question as Marty had, but also, your parking includes employee parking in that?
Yes.
Where, we are.
My thoughts will be for employees and the rest will be for whatever.
By code, we're overparked by, I believe, a hundred spaces, roughly around there. So we have plenty of parking for employees and patrons.
Sean, yeah, lights of the poles, pole lights?
Yeah.
You had made a comment, I guess, the twenty-foot?
Yeah, they propose in twenty-foot, your code limits it, it says between twelve and fifteen.
If they, if they had to scale it back to twelve, fifteen, without changing the whole, potentially change. change the lighting?
It likely would, but it depends on how much light that they really need. It also depends on the lighting around the building to a certain extent, so I don't think they're proposing any bothered lighting that you might find on sidewalks, so they may be able to eliminate some 20 foot tall mounted lights if they put in some bothered or maybe signature wall packs or something like that.
We have no issue with revising it.
That's something you'll be evaluating?
Yes.
You've got compliance that have to go to the ZBA for...
Yeah.
...or something like that.
Don't intend on doing that.
Good, thank you.
So you will be, you are in and you will be next to, you'll be next to existing residential properties.
Correct.
So there'll be concern, there will be a concern about noise, traffic, times of traffic, lights from traffic. General concerns, that would arise in connection with disturbing residential properties. So be mindful of that.
Yeah.
We'll be looking at that.
We'll certainly provide screening for the light issues and...
Noise, etc.
Noise dampening, yeah, we'll certainly look into that.
What is the, of the adjacent, where the Italian Americans were, that building there, is that?
This here?
Yeah.
This is actually their septic system.
No, no, I know that.
Yeah.
The building itself, I mean, it used to be a restaurant.
Oh, one ear?
Yeah.
Oh, I've...
And as far as any cumulative impacts between that and your project?
Oh, I'm not sure, I know it's, I believe it's being renovated right now.
Right. I still don't know what the intent is, if it's gonna impact yours or affect the traffic flow into yours, you know, it's depending on what type of use that's gonna have being so close to yours.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure how to answer that.
Frank, Neil, can I go?
First, come here.
Zach, I would say to address some of the board's concerns or comments with the accessory versus lodging, if you could send a letter to the building department for me to comment on whatever the concerns are. The other one was talking about the tent, right? What was, what was the issue there, the visual?
The visual, also the seasonality, of how long it could be up.
Yeah.
Neil mentioned 180 days.
Okay.
You know, is that like the 180 running straight days, or just whenever they need it?
Right.
For major events.
So Zach, any, any information, like, you know, put that in a letter, cite some codes that you think, why you're presenting it that way, I will interpret it and I will draft a letter.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, yeah. Right, there's this work being done at Club Arco, so they haven't indicated that they're doing anything different there?
No, I haven't, I've not received any application.
Okay.
I think they're doing some landscape patio stuff outside.
I know, I saw a concrete block up there, but I didn't look at it. So, one thing, I'm really kinda excited that this place is gonna be developed, maybe. It's about time, and then I'm not so sure, I think, hopefully it's gonna go through in some form or fashion. I think that, one question I have is, I think we had a similar, much smaller kind of thing posed for La Colina, which went to the ZBA, which impacted some of my interpretations at the time, so I think we have to look at that and how that impacts us, because they came up with an interesting, anything outside, patios and all that, I think were included in their 5,000 square feet.
Yeah, I'll make sure that the decision goes to Frank for his consideration, because it is presidential.
Right, okay, so it is kind of interesting, you may want to get a copy of that to make sure. Another thing is parking, and I don't know anything about the parking, I don't know how Franco does this thing, and Franco has history, and the town's just doing his house, and it's been great, I think Frank certainly had that. I think Franco certainly, he's gonna do something, is capable of doing it.
He can.
So, and I was not forgetting the compliance, but up there at the barn, they recently had something with the Chamber of Commerce, where they ran out of parking spaces, and I don't know why or how or anything else, and I know they, up there, it's fortunate, because they can use their other facilities that are right there, they can use it for flow parking. I don't know why they ran out, but certainly I think Franco can give us a better idea how parking works and what kind of impacts it may have. He has much more knowledge than I do, as a, but I think in that case, probably with the Chamber of Commerce, it was that one person would show up at each car, as opposed to people who go to weddings or events usually, where you usually have two or more.
I actually was at that event, when I was parked about 900 feet away from the building, on the street.
So, I think that consideration has to be made, and I think Franco probably can give us the best on that. I was kinda questioning, and it has more to do with food service, and I know the book says 10 gallons per seat, I don't know how Franco does, and Franco certainly has a history, and I think he can give us some idea, well, that's a realistic number to use for his water usage. I know a lot of it has to do with how you do food prep and everything else like that, but he's gonna do food prep here, and the same as he does other places, but I think he can give us a better idea on that. There is another building out here, and I don't think it impacts anything, but I think it should be labeled over there on the right-hand side, I think it has to do with the gas line, maybe.
It does, sure.
Okay, so I didn't see any label for it.
No, it doesn't have a label, I had actually asked the applicant, this is very, this is detailed, this is very clearly for use or zoning, but they're proposing some grading changes, and, you know, they have subsurface utilities there, we wanna make sure that we maintain a proper cover of those utilities.
Okay, anyhow, I think that should just be labeled for something that's on there. The other thing, I am very concerned, look, if this is gonna be done with the existing building, I'd be dancing the jiggle most, but the task for all the additional square footage to be added to this, I think is excessive, and certainly I think we should look at, if we're gonna look at that and consider, we should have option A and option B, and they can certainly, their option A can certainly be the expanded stuff, but I think the impacts maybe should be looked at separately. What are the impacts if we just use this existing building versus if we added all the other buildings? Because I know just in the addition, all of a sudden we're talking about jumping, I forget, with 175 for the existing building, or 175 is the additional building? But essentially doubling the size of the facility by adding this, as far as the number of people who can be there, the traffic involved and everything else. So I think if we're gonna look at this going forward, we should see the impacts both ways.
Yeah, it's 178 seats in the main, in that area, and 150 in the tech area.
So is it possible, speaking to that, that both the building and the tent area will be used at the same time?
The parking and the water demands have been calculated as such.
Okay. Traffic as yet?
As of today.
Yeah, this is our initial submission, so we got together a good amount of information, and we'll provide more as we move forward.
And just a note to that, on the parking, well, table requirement, it says 15 employees, on the well test, it said 25, was that in your notes?
Yeah, it was on there.
No, when you think you got it...
Yeah, we'll be, we'll address that, of course.
And same, same question for Franco, is 25 a realistic number for employees on a day, where we have the whole thing? And I trust his judgment pieces, but again, I think I prefer his judgment as opposed to getting it out of the book.
You had them say it's 25 and 24.
I think that would be pertaining on how many people are there, right?
Pardon?
It's not full, and it's like, in one place... Yeah, the bigger the party, the more employees are gonna need for that particular event.
Sure, so if you have the full thing, both of them going, and how many employees do you need, plus you have the lodging, plus you have the spa, I don't know the answers.
The only thing, I just wanna just get everybody on sync, and yes, I agree with you, the applicant knows his business better than anybody here. If the applicant comes in and says, well, the book says I need 10 gallons, but I only use six.
No, no, I don't have that going.
You're improving the use, right? So that should be the minimum.
Yeah.
Can I ask, what's the intention for the dollhouse out front? I see there's some renovations proposed for that.
I believe the intention was for photographs. I, it's not gonna be used as like a lodge, no, no, it's too small.
But does that usually fit for well? Because it says well three.
Uh, well, well three is close to the dollhouse. It's there, I haven't seen it, but it is there.
So the dollhouse not has no water?
Uh, no, I don't believe it does.
When this goes to the county, since it's a permit facility for the county as well, they're gonna be looking at the sewage and the water based on the DEC guidelines. So there's no flexibility to reduce it based on existing meter readings?
I understand. They used to allow that though, right?
Years ago.
I was thinking more in terms of if it's gonna go up and set it down.
Other comments or questions? If not, cut it.
Yes, a couple things, so first, I know there was a comment in Sean's memo about the ZBA appeals that has been withdrawn, so you don't have to worry about that. In terms of secret, you can declare your intent to service lead agency and type the action as they type the action.
Could I have said motion? So, Phil, second by. Diana, all in favor, say aye?
Right.
Against? Type one, and intent, I believe they're just saying.
And so now the applicant doesn't need a formal referral to the ZBA, they can just go to the ZBA, but know that the ZBA is not gonna be, well, actually, it depends on what you're doing, disregard what I was about to say.
So, so we have said.
There we go, I had, I had a thought, and it stopped and made track. That's it, we'll refer to the county, and at the appropriate time, a public hearing will be needed.
Mr. Chairman, do you wanna consider a site visit?
I think it might be beneficial.
Can you stake out the, perhaps, corners of the building, or, you know, I don't know, what would the board like to know the limits of, presumably the corner, so the building, or the parking lot, things like that?
Yeah.
The limits of the tent would pretty much direct where the parking's gonna go.
Okay.
And there's a, let us have disturbance, Zach, brother, because of grading issues, I think that would be helpful.
And maybe it was like different colored tags?
Yeah, I mean, maybe, and the building, but they may be grading out another 50 feet to catch the grading or whatever.
Yeah.
I don't know the answer.
And let the building department know when that's done, and then they can...
So, I mean, this is, it's 12 acres disturbance, I don't know exactly what the board would be looking for in regards to grading layout, and, I mean, planometrically, providing limits of the parking area and where the tent areas, but that including the grading, if you want us to provide a bottom slope, we can certainly do that, but...
I think limits of disturbance, obviously it's a large parcel, it's like 150 acres, right? So, and I don't know how concerned the board is behind the structure. In front, though, you do have those residential structures, I think you're interested in how close the limits of disturbance get to those structures and the property line, so I think it would be sticking to that line there.
Okay.
And I think just the corners to give the board some feel of where they are when they're out of view.
As well as the property line.
Yeah, the four corners of the lot, and the four corners of the building.
So, if like around here, you probably wanna see where the limits of the grading is.
Okay.
Understood.
You're really gonna disturb 12 acres? Or are they, do they have 12 acres?
With the location of the septic, the improvements in the grading, the ponds and the parking lot, yeah.
Okay, good, thank you.
I would ask, Lee, for like a reference plan for this site visit, so, you know, what the markings are, the colors, Zach, is that okay?
Yeah.
Frank, do you have anything else?
That's all.
Neil?
No.
We're gonna send it out to, what are the other agencies?
Anybody who's involved, agency.
Okay, I was just, I, I, I was just saying to the county, we're saying that this...
Oh, I just wanted, he had asked before if we would refer it.
Okay, so we'll send it to all the other agencies. Okay, good, thank you.
Sean, anything else? Anything else from the board?
No.
Zach, do you have any questions for us?
I do, yeah.
In that case, have a good evening.
You too.
And can we have a motion for executive decisions?
I don't know what to go with.
Thank you.
Possible hiring of additional personnel.
Consultant.
So the intent not...
Not to go back into business afterwards. Could I have said motion?
I think you have that motion.
Thank you, Phil, second by. Marty, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Against? Okay, we'll go with existing...